Good evening, on behalf of the Plainfield League of Women Voters, I need to welcome you to this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages and promotes active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Elections and voting are the core concerns of the League of Women Voters. The League is committed to providing fact-based information about issues and the positions that candidates take on those issues to help voters make their own decisions and participate in the electoral process. Conducting forums like this one is one of the ways we encourage active participation in government. Your participation today helps us carry our mission. We thank you for coming. If you would like to participate in any of these efforts, the Plainfield League of Women Voters welcomes new members, both men and women. You will find information on the membership forums on the entrance table. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. Any use of the League's name or the footage from this forum in campaign material, literature, advertising of any kind, including internet, cable, or television, has not been authorized by the League of Women Voters. As a courtesy to the candidates, please turn off or silence your cell phones and any electronic devices. Please refrain from taking photographs or videos during the forum. Tonight's forum is for two city council seats. The first seat is for Ward Two, the candidates are Cory Storch, who is the incumbent, and Sean McKenna. The second seat is for the at-large seat for Ward One and Four. The candidates are Barry Good, who is the incumbent, Bridgette Rivers, and Terry Briggs-Jones. At this time, I'd like to introduce to the moderator, Michelle Barbara. Thank you. Per the League's practices, she does not leave within the voting districts, and she is a League-trained moderator. Ms. Barbara will outline the format for tonight's forum.
Thank you all for coming to this event, which will hopefully enlighten you as to learn about the candidates, to pass an informed decision. The format, first of all, as was said before, turn off all your devices, please. We just don't want them on, and it's against League policy. The format is the candidates drew for opening statements for their order. After that, they will have two minutes to give you their idea of why they are the best person to run for this office. Then, you have submitted questions on cards, which I have here. They each have one minute to answer. There will be no rebuttals. But if you feel you have to rebut something, you can do it in your closing statement, which will be two minutes at the end. We ready? The timekeepers are there. You will have a 15-second warning and then a stop. So, opening statements, the candidates have drawn, and first, Mr. Storch.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the audience for your interest in Plainfield. I'm a 40-year resident of Plainfield, running for reelection to City Council in the Second Ward. Plainfield is experiencing progress after many years of stagnation. The City Hall story is part of the larger story, and it's about an increasingly responsive and results-oriented city government. To skeptics, yes, you've got a good deal of work ahead of us, but to fail to see the direction we're headed ignores what we've done and will accomplish as a city. First and foremost, crime is down significantly. Police are nationally accredited and fully equipped with the latest crime-fighting technology. Community policing is happening. 130 roads have been paved since 2016 in our Accelerated Road Program. After 50 years of neglect, we will catch up to our 15-year plan. Improved bond rating saves taxpayers money and increases the number of roads that are paved every year. Recreation facilities are being upgraded, Sidle Field, Cedar Brook Park. Green Brook Walkway has finally started. Milk Campbell Field and Rushmore Playground improvements are coming. South Second Street Youth Center project is completed. And, of course, our skateboard park is now in use. We have a half a billion dollars in development. Investor confidence is very strong in Plainfield's comeback, and projects are happening across the whole city. As you know, the health of the city is not just about what the city government does. To Second Ward residents, I invite you to take a stroll down East Seventh Street, Berkman, Putnam, Kensington, and many other streets, and you will see many homes that have been renovated. Our residential area of Second Ward is as beautiful as it's been in a long, long time. Why is this only happening now? It's because we have leadership in the mayor's office. We have cooperation between the mayor, the council, state, and local government.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
Good evening. Thank you to the League for hosting this event. And also, thank you to Tim O'Connor for your work as the president of the League in keeping such a strong and vibrant organization here. And also, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. I know you have a lot of demands on your time, and so making the effort to come here is appreciated. I think that we need to all admit on this table that we're all interested in a bright and prosperous future for Plainfield and for all of its residents. I think we have that in common. I think that we need to give credit where credit is due, where there have been successes. Since Adrian has been in office, there have been quite a few. I think that we also need to understand that we have learned the line between legislative and executive branches. And while the legislative and executive need to work together for a common goal in a prosperous Plainfield, they are separate but equal branches. And I think we need to get back to a place where we live up to that charter and the way that all governments within the United States operate and have a legislative branch that asks questions, that has a legislative branch that inquires of how the taxpayer money is being spent, that asks how programs are operating so that we're getting a return for our investment, and asks real detailed information and not just voting to approve everything. We owe that to the citizens, and we owe that to everybody who's paying hard-earned taxes to the system. We also deserve a council, in all words, that is active and responsive within their ward. And that does not mean putting on a matching polo shirt and going to events and sitting together. That means being out in the community, walking your streets, talking to your neighbors, and finding out what it is that they need help with. It's about getting back to the fundamentals of public service. It is not about politics. It is not about what's best for the county. It is not what's best for the state. It is about public service. It's called politics. It's called Plainfield, and it's Plainfield about politics. And that's what we need to focus on, and that's what we need to get back to, and everything else is secondary. And I will also point out that we've had $500 million in investment for quite some time, but that's just approved. There aren't shovels in the ground on all of that.
Thank you. Mr. Good.
Good evening, everyone. First, and foremost, I'd like to thank the credit school of art and the Plainfield League of Women Voters to the president, Tim O'Connor, for this opportunity. My name is Barry Good, and I am the first and fourth Ward Councilman-at-Large. A position I'm proud to have, as I represent our community city. I'm committed to the city, and I believe in good governance and accountability. And over the past four years, I have worked tirelessly to help make Plainfield a better place. I have worked closely with our former police director on multiple initiatives such as lighting up and increasing police presence to reassure our residents of their safety, as I believe that no resident should feel afraid to live where they are. As chairman to the Senior Citizens Center, I participate and sponsor numerous events and help to expand recreational services for them. In fact, this weekend, I am being honored in Atlantic City for an award from the New Jersey League of Libraries, Library League, I apologize. And I will not be able to attend that award ceremony because I've committed myself to the seniors, their event that they're having this Friday. As chairman to the senior citizens, I have dedicated to helping them in many ways. I've sponsored numerous events and have helped to expand their recreational services to them and our youth. And I've been a mentor and tutor to the youth for many years, including reading to the children every single month for the last six, of which three and a half, I was a councilman. I am a councilman. We have spent $3.6 billion on upgrading our parks and much more to come. And as chairman of the Finance Committee this year, I work to make sure our pools are open on Memorial Day weekend when it was said that they will not be. There is a lot of good about me, as well as in the community that I serve. I look forward to discussing the issues factually and respectfully. Let me also say that $2.9 million was spent on 45 roads in the First and Fourth Ward as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rivers.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to take the opportunity to first thank my high power, whom I choose to call God, for allowing us to be here. I would like to thank the community for having this forum. I would like to thank the residents for coming out to hear our views. Let the work that I've done speak for me. As I run for City Council, I was a previous City Council member for eight years in the Fourth Ward, but I was not only in the Fourth Ward, I was in all wards. As you can see, I walk the beat. I continue to do what's right by the city of Plainfield and by our residents. One of the things that we have to invest in, because there is money there. As you know, I sat on the City Council. There's a cry as you walk the streets for a community center for our youth. We must find the dollars to invest in a community center. There has always been a road plan through the previous administration, so let me just educate you guys on that. It's a road plan that is consistent every year, so they roll out the roads that needs to be paved. Yes, there is multimillion-dollar investments going on in the city of Plainfield. But why not take these investors that are invested in the city of Plainfield and have them to invest in our youth and our seniors? This is what I've been about all my life as a lifelong resident. I ran for mayor. I was unsuccessful, didn't sit on the City Council, but never stopped doing the work for the city of Plainfield. I've done bookbag drives. I've done Christmas giveaways, the less unfortunate. So as your first and fourth Ward Councilperson, I'm going to do more. I didn't just invest in the Fourth Ward. I invested in all wards. See, I'm not one to get up on Facebook and talk about what I've done and what I can do. I just let my work do for me. So I'm asking, on June 4th, yes, I'm running alone. I owe no one but the residents of the city of Plainfield. We have to start investing in our residents. We must show transparency in everything that's happening in this great city of Plainfield. So on June 4th, I'm asking you. See, they think that our residents are not educated, but I need you to understand, I'm on line two. Look for me first and vote line two. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question we have is... Do you make house calls?
Yes.
We'll talk later. Last night, there was a tornado warning issued for the local area. Would you, as a City Councilperson, have used the robocall system to notify residents of the potential dangers? Mr. Good, Ms. Rivers, Mr. McKenna, and Mr. Storch.
Can you please read the question?
Regarding the tornado warning last night, would you have used the robocall system to warn residents?
Absolutely. What better time to use the robocall than inform the people in the city that there is an emergency and there's a storm approaching? Not just a normal storm, but we're talking about a tornado. Yes, I see nothing wrong with that. I expect we did that.
Okay. Ms. Rivers.
My answer is yes. I think the residents should have been informed of the tornado, and they should have also been informed as to where our fallout shelters are and where they can go in the case that they have no lights. So that, yes, I do agree that the robocall should have been used.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
You know, I'm not going to be so quick to jump in here and be an emergency management expert. I'm going to say that a lot of people got the alert on the phones. Emergency management is managed at state and federal level. I don't know that we start getting into the mix and sending out emergency last-minute robocalls and confusing people. So I'm just going to refrain from jumping on that bandwagon and saying, I don't know, it's worth looking at, but I think it probably complicates things in any way. I will say that we have issues in the city when we have emergencies. We had a snowstorm a couple of years ago, and the city was not around. And we had people without power for days, and there was terrible plowing and a real lack of coordination. So I think if we're going to get into the city's involvement, it's kind of after the fact, an emergency, and not getting in the way of emergency management alerts.
Thank you. Mr. Storch.
The city has, under this administration and the current council, re-implemented Nixel, which I think does serve a purpose similar to what we're talking about right now. I turned it off because I got sick and tired of the neighboring towns telling me their streets were closed, but I trust that some people are getting that message. But I also got it by phone, and I think it was very effective. And you can get it from AccuWeather, there's many sources. Not everybody has a smartphone, so we do need to make sure that people who don't have that technology are going to get the message.
Thank you. The Health Center is in bankruptcy court. What would you, as a councilperson, propose if the Health Center does close? Ms. Rivers, Mr. Storch, Mr. Good, and Mr. McKenna.
Well, I truly hope that we do not lose the Health Center, because we have already lost Melburn Hospital. So if the Health Center is closed, what I would recommend is that we reach out to the community and give them resources, so they'll know where they can go to get the coverage that they're getting at the Health Center. This is what we have to do, and I'm saying, the administration, along with the council, are doing some good things. But when it comes to transparency and communication, I think we fail in that area. Because when Melburn Hospital closed, no one was aware until the meeting. So right now, you might be giving us information that we don't know. So we need to reach out to the community and let them know that the Health Center might be in danger of closing. We, as a governing body, we have to do better with our communications to the community. We have to.
Thank you. Mr. Storch.
I actually have been involved with the situation at the Health Center. I asked the mayor about a year and a half ago to convene a meeting of the Health Center Board and some local officials, like myself, to see what we could do to help. Because they've been in financial difficulty for quite some years. They've been in bankruptcy for years. And it looks now that they're kind of winding it down. So I've been asked by a local, not a local, an assemblywoman who previously was very involved with the Health Center. She's not in our district. But she's asked me if I would participate with her to recruit new board members, because the board is being reconstituted by the court-appointed administrator, and they've terminated the executive director, the CEO, and they're also looking for an interim CEO. So I agree that I would help recruit for that.
Thank you. Mr. Good.
First and foremost, if this is about to happen, it would be chaotic for the residents of Plainfield to hear about this at the last minute. There are many of our residents that rely on the Health Center for many reasons, from dental down to any other medical issues that they may have. I think that we should explore immediate resources. I feel from the state level, county level, the state level, whatever resources that we can be proactive in gathering together before this happens, because, like I said, and it is repeating, it will be chaotic for a lot of people who rely on health services for the Health Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
Well, you know, the specifics of the Health Center, it's been a problem for years, and they've been struggling. And I know that only too well, because I'm on the board of the Plainfield YCA that has struggled for years. And we tried to do a joint venture with the Health Center so that we could try to make two struggling organizations strong. And you know that the fundamental issue here is that we have people having conversations about things a year and a half ago, when an organization is struggling. And conversations should be occurring every day, and they should be pulling in resources to keep it alive instead of letting it suffer and die and then try to figure out how to fill the gap after the fact. So I think part of the issue is that we're not really very responsive, or we don't take these things seriously. And I think we've got a lot of organizations similar to the Health Center in Plainfield and the surrounding areas that are in a similar boat. And I can speak from experience that the 501(c)(3) is a very difficult world right now. So I think we need to be a little more active, and I think we need to be really proactive and get the resources in place before these things get to the state. It's been going on for years, so it's amazing that we're like that far, especially when Carlos Sanchez was on the board of that organization.
Thank you. A different topic. What is your recommendation about what should be done with the homeless population in town? Ms. Rivers, Mr. Storch, Mr. McKenna, and Mr. Good.
The homeless population is getting out of control in the city of Plainfield. I have a function, and one of the things that I would recommend is that we reach out to the homeless, find them somewhere to go, find them jobs. The city has a lot of vacant buildings that the city owns. So maybe we can build a shelter to help these people, to help the homeless, maybe like an entry program so that we can get them stable enough to go on the street and be on their own. But it's a bad, it's a serious situation that's happening in the city of Plainfield. And we, as councilmembers, we, as residents of the city of Plainfield, we can't just rely on the governing body to help. We have to get out there, and we have to help also. We have to come out to these council meetings, go out to the county, go to the freeholders' meetings, try to find resources so that we can address this homeless issue, because it's very bad in the city of Plainfield. Very bad.
Thank you. Mr. Storch.
This is not my City Council hat that I'm wearing, but I'm the CEO of Ridgeway Rehabilitation Services. We are based in Elizabeth, but we serve the whole county. We do have a street outreach program for people who are homeless and are experiencing a mental health condition. We've just expanded that service to focus more on homeless youth and youth that are at risk of homelessness. So this problem is county-wide. It's predominantly in Elizabeth, and the Plainfield has its share as well. And what we see is when the economy is struggling, there's more homeless people. We're actually seeing an uptick in homelessness, but Ridgeway, and there's a whole homeless system that we're part of that has done some good work in reducing the number of people that are street homeless. And we do that through wraparound services to help people get back to work, to help them address their health problems and mental health problems. And it has been a difficult time for Plainfield, because we did have... The Plainfield Y shelter was an important cog in that wheel, and that's no longer in operation. So we're sending people over to the Elizabeth Shelter now.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
So homeless is an area that I'm familiar with, because of the YMCA. We have a men's shelter, a women's shelter, a family shelter. And when, unfortunately, we had to sell the YMCA building, we partnered with the Somerset Y, who was interested in finding a property in town of some size and developing a family shelter so that the kids could have a normal environment and have a backyard and the area to play, and most importantly, be in the community they go to school in. Right now, because as a result of attempting that, we didn't get any support from the administration, they decided to support the Gateway YMCA in Elizabeth. So the one that Mr. Storch talks about is where people go. They get bused to Elizabeth, because the mayor chose to partner with that YMCA instead of the Plainfield Y. So unfortunately, we're going to have to do it alone through the Plainfield Somerset YMCA, because the resources and the support is just not here in time.
Mr. Good.
Unfortunately, this is something that's nationwide. Plainfield just has its share of homeless. With being homeless comes a few other things: unemployment and also illnesses. And I think at this point, and I have no abiding call on numerous occasions, where people were being evicted from their apartments, and in some cases, even where they were rooming. And I personally would refer them to Plainfield Action Services, which is right here in our city. I was told at that point, because I always followed up, I didn't just refer them, I always follow them to find out where they would be going, and of course, they would send them down to the county. So at this point, it being as widespread as it is, it's imperative that we get resources from all over the place to pull together this epidemic that we have called homeless.
Thank you. Ms. Terry Briggs-Jones has just arrived. She was unavoidably detained. And as soon as you sit down and get your breath, would you like to address the homeless situation in Plainfield and your solutions?
Well, first of all, I just want to apologize to everyone for running late, but that's okay. Save the best for last. However, I didn't quite hear the entire question, but I will say this. As far as the homeless is concerned, I know that the YMCA, they did have people there that was a holding station for men and women. I do know that. And at this point, my question is, where do they go from here? Especially when it comes to a warming station. Now, when it's cold outside, where do the people go? So they have like a holding place, and then you take them to Elizabeth, I believe, I understand? They go to Tijuana, I believe, and then they go to Elizabeth. Now, if that's the case, why we can't just have a place here for our homeless people? They need to be here. This is our town. So I just think that's important, that we look for resources so that we have our people here. And they need shelter, we need to give them shelter.
Thank you. Next question is, what would you do to improve transparency in city government? Mr. McKenna, Mr. Good, Mr. Storch, Ms. Rivers, and Ms. Briggs-Jones.
Can I buy like five extra minutes for this one? So this is a huge point for me, and I think it's a huge point for a lot of people in the city. Transparency is such a problem across every area. If you go to a City Council meeting and you see people get up and ask a question, and the response after their three minutes or five minutes is, "Thank you," that's it. We don't answer questions. We don't treat people with the respect to help educate them on what the issues are. We don't treat them like they're paying our bills, which they are paying all bills. We're all paying the bills here. So we don't treat them like owners and stakeholders and stockholders. The other thing we do is we create redevelopment plans without being forthright to the planning board, to the zoning boards, and to the public about what the intent for those properties are. That's a lack of transparency, so I think we need to be upfront. We need to ask the right questions, and I'm the one that will do that.
Mr. Good.
Pretty much can sum that question up with one word, and that would be communication. It doesn't hurt to communicate, especially with the people that... It doesn't hurt to communicate, especially with the people that you serve. As a member of the governing body, I communicate with residents of Plainfield quite often. Whatever their concerns are, I respond. Sometimes when you respond and you reach out, you don't always get expedited help right away, but that does not mean that you give up. So that transparency, yes, it may be something that needs to be worked on, but definitely I could see myself, as always, as giving the information that people ask me and not cutting them off or not telling them anything. That's going to be not worthwhile to them, but something that will enhance their questions.
Mr. Storch?
So I think that we're doing some good things with transparency, but I think we have some improvements. On the positive side, we do televise our council meetings. They're actually gonna go live because right now they're recorded. I think that'll increase accountability, being on the spot. Our website is greatly improved. We have all kinds of information on the website, including schedules, meeting minutes, and the like. When it comes to the redevelopment plans that Mr. McKenna is mentioning, I actually agree with him on this. And there is a process, we do follow the state law, which allows minimally public comment at the very last minute on a redevelopment plan. These plans are too important to have that limited contact. So I'm gonna invite Mr. McKenna to join me after the election to hold a forum in the second ward to talk about, not specific redevelopment plans because they're not here yet, they're coming soon, but really to talk about the vision of what we want, what the residents want to see on South Avenue. And of course, residents will never get everything they want, but it's really a discussion and a dialogue that we want to have with city officials and our developers because they've really got to ask them. It's gonna have to be like some give and take.
Thank you. Ms. Rivers?
Transparency is key. Communication unlocks the door. What we need to start doing more is having community meetings in every ward. When there's a big development project that's about to take place, such as South Avenue, not just the second ward resident should be there, it should be every resident in all four wards. When I served on the council, I was very transparent with my, with the residents of the fourth ward and all over. I hate to say this, but the council is not being transparent to what's happening in the city of Plainfield. And you must reach out to your residents, not just when you're knocking on doors for elections, but you must reach out to your residents to let them know what's going on in the city of Plainfield. And I believe South Avenue project is a great project, but you must inform the residents about the project because you have a lot of residents asking about the pilot program, which I will address later.
Thank you. And Ms. Briggs-Jones?
Yes, it's funny that you're saying something about transparency. I just wanted to elaborate on this then. When I was out door knocking, the residents and citizens of Plainfield don't even understand politics. And I had a problem with that. When I went to the houses, they said, I said, "What are you running for?" I said, "I'm running for city council 1/4." "One?" "Isn't that Ashley?" I said, "No." I said, "1/4." So what is that? So I explained to them what the politics are, what it means. And I said, "When I become your council person, I will explain to the residents what it's been a city council person, what the politics is all, and then also have open communication." When I ran two years ago, I'd say something about having an open door policy to meet with the citizens and residents of Plainfield, not only just for a vote, but they need to see you after a vote. You need to be visible.
Thank you very much. Question about building. With all the apartment buildings being built, do you have any plans to set aside seniors, senior housing and affordable housing and low-income housing? In one minute. We'll start with Ms. Briggs-Jones, Ms. Rivers, Mr. Storch, Mr. Good, and Mr. McKenna. Ms. Briggs-Jones?
Yes. Okay, as far as the senior housing is concerned, first of all, because of the taxes and the way they're, you know, how high they're going and the tax, and the increase in the taxes, what happens is it's very hard for our seniors to even stay here. So to read about when seniors have to leave and go somewhere else to live, that's not right. They should be able to stay here. So we should make it so that this development that's going up now, seniors should be our priority first. And they should also be the ones that say, "Okay, wait a minute. I want to stay here. This is my city. I've been here for years. And this is my town." And it's something that they can be proud, that they can be proud of. So with that being said, with the seniors, we need to make sure that we pay more attention to them because sometimes they fall by the wayside also as well.
Thank you. Ms. Rivers?
I believe when I served on the council, the developer would have to put forth a certain percentage of the property that he's building for low income, for affordable housing. Now, there was a 50-plus unit that went up off of Front Street for seniors. As far as the seniors are concerned, there are several senior centers and we do need to do more by our seniors. But as far as the apartment buildings that are going up, there are a percentage, I don't know if it's 10%, set aside for low-income housing and affordable housing.
Mr. Storch?
I think we need to address housing. There's many housing needs. So regarding senior housing, we have a project that's just broken ground on South Second Street. This is in the fourth ward west end for 80 units. So that's a new project. And we also, when it comes to like income, low-income housing, it's, I think the real issue for us is we need to improve that housing. So Elmwood Gardens, for example, we've demolished it. We're working with the housing authority and we're gonna rebuild it in a much more quality of life and conducive manner for the residents that are gonna move back in there. But Plainfield also needs more middle-income housing. And I think that's what we're seeing now on South Avenue. Plainfield has fairly large concentration of people, low-income folks in pockets around town. And I think we need to really have a balance between helping those people have a better place to live, but also having people who have more money in their pockets that can stimulate our business economy.
Thank you. Mr. Good?
First, let me say, I'd like to correct my colleague. Last week, we broke ground on 90 units of affordable housing. We have a mixed-use project on Westerville with 80 units for our seniors. I don't believe our seniors, as far as housing, is something that had been ignored for them. I think it's something that is in the forefront. We do care about our seniors. We do not want to see them in the street, I mean, not having someplace to live. And I think that the roadmap to what we have done for them speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, so I struggle in some of these conversations because it's something, you know, especially senior housing is important. But then you hear people up here say that they don't think we need it, they're not sure if we need it, we don't think we're ignoring them, we think we're addressing it. The reality is, why don't we know? Why don't we know what the housing shortage is for seniors? Why don't we know what the housing shortage is for low and moderate income individuals? Why don't we know that? I think that we should probably start getting some facts first and then start making these decisions. And we also have, by the way, we also don't tend to integrate any developments, low-income quotas. So I'm on the planning board, so I'm somewhat familiar with that. We tend to have everybody in different neighborhoods. One exception that I will throw in there is that the development of Buehlberg does have to set aside 55 and over in that, in those apartments.
Thank you. In the same vein, redevelopment is occurring in many, many towns. What areas, geographic and specific types of redevelopment, would you like to see? And we'll start with Ms. Reeves, Mr. Storch, Ms. Briggs-Jones, Mr. McKenna, and Mr. Good?
Can you do that again?
Rivers, sorry. Redevelopment is happening in many, many towns all over the state. What areas would you focus on, both geographically and the kinds of redevelopment you would like to see?
Geographically, I think we need more mixed use. With mixed use in our redevelopment, it helps with the taxpayers because you have stores at the bottom that pay taxes in lieu of the developer, the developer that might get a tax advantage. Now, let me just say one thing about the pilot programs. A lot of people do not like the pilot programs, but what you still don't realize is with the pilot program, the city gets about 90% of the taxes, whereas when you pay your regular taxes, we get about 20% of the taxes. So I just wanted to make that very clear first because I own a lot of pilot programs. So you would want a developer that's bringing in a million dollar contract to do a pilot program because we're gonna incur 80% of that, 90% of that for sure. But yes, I would like to see more mixed use, not just apartments. We need more mixed use in the city of Plainfield. So that's the type of development I would like to see. I think the train station, we have a lot of train stations that are opening up now. So let's get some more mixed use so we can get these taxes down. That's the only way we're gonna recover from these taxes. We have to bring, and you have to revitalize that old downtown area.
Thank you.
You have to want people to come here. Thank you.
Mr. Storch?
So I agree with Ms. Rivers about mixed use. Around our train stations, we are looking to do higher density and also include mixed use on the ground floor. And that's really important for our downtown and also South Avenue. The rail line, we really want to see, I want to see, light industrial come back. This is all for creating jobs and also rebuilding our tax base. And then we don't just want redevelopment, we also want rehabilitation of one, two, and three family homes because the quality of our residential neighborhoods is important. And we don't have to tear everything down. We respect our history. We've got some decent housing that could be rehabilitated. And that should be an important part because in our residential areas, we don't want to increase the density, we want to improve the housing stock.
Thank you. Ms. Briggs-Jones?
As far as the redevelopment is concerned, geographically, right now at this point, what they're doing is, it's a great job what they're doing, but again, I see where we should redevelop our houses that we have here. All these homes that are boarded up, we need to rehab them. We need to get some more training in here, as we do, and additional training. Get these people in these homes, especially in that fourth ward. There's a lot of homes in that fourth ward and those homes are boarded up. We need to do, we need to use our resources that we have now, not go and do something else that's out of the norm. We need to use our resources that we have right here in this city, in this great town of Plainfield. Rehab these houses, we have the manpower and everything. Let's do what we need to do. Let's get these people in home because you'd be surprised how many people want to be in home and can't be in home.
And Mr. McKenna?
So I agree about the homes being rehabilitated. That really falls more under the abandoned properties and I hope somebody put a card in there with that question. Since I'm running for second ward, I'm just gonna stick to second ward because I have a minute. I really think that we have a $55 million project on South Avenue and we, the guy is gonna start renting one of the units at the end of July, early August. It's a beautiful building and we've done absolutely nothing to help him support that investment. So people are gonna come and rent those and they're gonna see across the street a former nursery with barbed wire fence and a rusted sign and a bad block, cement block building. We have banners hanging from buildings that are ripped and torn because we don't enforce the code. We have people that just put up any sign they want on South Avenue. We're not focused on providing any support to that gentleman who came in and invested a lot of money to give backup, supportive development to that property. So there's no sit-down restaurants. We're getting rid of the restaurants. We're putting in gas stations. We've got liquor licenses piling up instead of having places to go and have a drink and the community get together. So I think that's what we really need to focus on in addition to all these apartment buildings, particularly going up on the north, with no supportive development behind that either.
Thank you. Mr. Good?
First of all, I didn't think that I would ever agree with everybody on the panel tonight, but there's an old saying that charity begins at home and then it spreads abroad. So I do believe that there's much of rehab that needs to be done here in the city of Plainfield. I also agree with the mixed use. I think most of all, I would love to see major retail here in Plainfield. Major retail, you know, other than wireless phone, you know, phone companies. We have the capability of having a major retail right here in the city of Plainfield. So mixed use is good. Apartments, they're good. But rehab, yes, and major retail, I would love to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfectly appropriate for right now. Would you please discuss the flood zone plan and what you would do about it? Mr. Storch, Mr. Good, Mr. McKenna, Ms. Briggs-Jones, and Ms. Rivers?
Our flood zones are governed by federal government and we've been talking with them for a number of years about getting some changes made. This is a very difficult process. We have money in this year's budget. In the last couple of years, there was money in the budget that didn't get spent. I've been very unhappy with the lack of progress. But I also recognize that we have, that it's gonna take time to get them to move off the dime. We want to see, there are properties that don't need to be in the flood plain more. For example, we built a flood retention basin at Campbell Field. So there are properties in that area that don't need to be paying like all these premiums for flood insurance anymore, or maybe they can get a reduced premium. So we also have a program where we're trying to get certain parameters met so that we could be eligible for a premium reduction. And I think that's gonna happen either in the late 2019 or early 2020.
Mr. Good?
I do believe that there needs to be more pressure put on the federal government. There are some people that I know that are paying high premiums and they're not even in flood zones. So I think that's ridiculous. And that's basically all I have to say. More pressure on the federal government. I believe these people paying these high premiums are not even in flood zones.
Mr. McKenna?
I'm gonna agree here, but I'm also gonna say that every time you go to one of these debates, they tell you it's gonna be solved in the next year or two. It's been going on for a long time. But it is at the federal level and FEMA also is gonna be a little resistant because their funds are short, so they need that, they need those insurance funds to pile up in their accounts for disasters. So they're not gonna be real quick to get off the dime on that. But I think it's important for us to push and push our congresspeople, Ollie Watson Coleman can certainly help with that. Because the other thing that affects not only homeowners and the premiums, but it affects development. The North Avenue project that was approved, it's been delayed probably eight or nine months because it needed 15 different approvals because it's in a flood zone. Even though it's gonna be built four feet above the flood zone. So there's a little bit of ridiculousness that goes in this and I think that it's important for the city to be involved and it's important for the city to start asking favors of our congresspeople to get them to move as well because people that live here are their constituents.
Ms. Briggs-Jones?
Okay, I'm not real familiar with the flood zone and don't have no, not a knowledge. And I'm that type of person. I will let you know if I don't know something. So I had no shame in my game, but however, as far as the flood zone is concerned, I did have some information that was sent to me from my insurance company talking about the flood zone. I'm like, "Wait a minute. I'm not in a flood zone. I mean, tell me what the demographics are. I would definitely like to know." But as far as, if my premium's going up because of the flood zone and I haven't had a flood, please... please somebody talk to the government, because I don't want to pay no more than what I'm paying.
Ms. Rivers?
I have to agree with my former colleagues. This is an issue that we have been trying to address for a very long time. But I have to say to the residents of the city of Plainfield, don't believe that it's going to happen. It's at the federal government level. We've called, we've written letters, we as councilpeople have tried to address this several times. It takes more than the governing body. We're going to have to get residents involved, and this is where I've come out with the communication. Inform your residents what's happening with the issue of the flood zone so that the residents can come and get involved. Because when you start bustling residents to Trenton, then they'll hear what we have to say. But we've been working on this for an extremely long time. So right now, you know, you might say, well, we're going to build this committee. We've got too many committees, and nothing's being done out of these committees. So let's just involve our residents, inform them what's really happening with the flood zone, and get them down the train, so that this issue can be addressed. Because there are some properties in Plainfield that are in the flood area, and there are some that are not in the flood area that are paying high premiums.
Thank you. What can you do, what would you do to have? Would you please discuss Plainfield's plan to be a green city and a transit city, and how would you achieve that? Ms. Rivers, Ms. Briggs Jones, Mr. Storch, Mr. Good, and Mr. McKenna?
Well, I believe Plainfield is heading in the right direction as far as a green city is concerned, because a lot of the communications now are electronic. So you can go on, you can download your agendas. So I think we're heading in the right direction as far as becoming a green city. As far as a transit oriented, orientation city, I think we're heading in the right zone with that also. Because when you see our train stations, you see a lot of development going on. So I believe that this question, Plainfield, and I have to, you know, one thing everybody know about me, if I feel like the council or the mayor's doing something right, then I'm going to address it. And I believe that we are heading in that direction. As a former council member, we addressed, we started addressing being green. Because, you know, with all the paper and the paper trails, it, it's not working for a lot of people. But then you have to also realize that some of our residents don't have computers, so we have to find a way to address them also. But yet, Plainfield is heading in the right direction as far as being a green city and a transit orientation city.
Thank you. Ms. Briggs Jones?
Yes, hi. Plainfield is in the green, I, I, from what I see, it is in the green. But however, with the transit, I think, you know, I believe with the transit, it's a, we're moving in the right direction with the transit. We're building up, which is nice. I know I had seen someone complaining about the crash and all of that stuff going on around the transit. But as far as the transit is concerned, we are moving in the right direction. They're building up, there's people coming along. You know, everything is going to be a process. Everything is, nothing happens overnight. So personally, we're in the green. We're not moving backwards, we're moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Storch?
Doing some things, and we could do more. We have the Line Bike program, and that's an experiment that I think is, is really commendable for the administration to do. We, we, we need to see more like walkable parts of the city, and not, and less dependence on cars. So how do we do that? That is no easy feat. So the downtown development and having more apartments in downtown, where people can live down there, and they can walk to shopping, they can walk to the train station. And to a lesser extent, we want to do the same thing around Netherwood Station. I think this is all going to be good towards reducing pollution and really increasing people's health, right? Really transporting by, by your own power rather than a car. We also have a shade tree commission that has done a very good job of replanting trees. I, you know, going door to door, I've discovered that some people are afraid of trees, but I just want to say, we're doing a much better job of selecting tree types that are not going to fall on people's homes after fifty years, not going to eat the sidewalks, they're going to be much more amiable to the city.
Thank you. Mr. Good?
I think we're headed in the right direction. One thing I did not hear, but I've always been a big, it's always been a big deal with me, to encourage carpooling. Carpooling is a, is an awesome thing. Some people don't like to drive, so I think picking one person to drive will be, can everybody go in the same direction? That works. Council Storch took the Line Bike right out of my head, because no one else had mentioned it, but we do have a very successful Line Bike at all the train stations. And from what I understand, there's something in the works for something else. I don't want to say the wrong thing, but we are headed in the right direction. And I believe going green, they are being proactive, very proactive.
Thank you. And Mr. McKenna?
I would start, I think, making the city greener by getting rid of seven SUVs at City Hall and replacing them with a Line Bike. I would also, I would also endorse the Shade Tree Commission, but I would ask that, that the mayor appoints some people to that commission, because I don't think they've had a quorum in like three months. I would also say that the transit oriented development downtown, transit oriented development Netherwood are really not a focus. They're a focus in our master plan. But, but we don't really take the effort to follow the master plan and really drive development down there. And that, that would be key. Wawa is not green. I don't know if I have to explain that to anybody, but it's not. I would also like to mimic a little bit, Orlando has a really phenomenal program with solar. And I would love, I have this, this vision of, of piloting it in the Bruce Bayne Estates area, having that place be completely self-sufficient with energy. But I guess we could talk about Line Bikes and Trees, but we've got to get a quorum on that committee first in order to plant some more trees.
Thank you. Switching from trees, what would you propose as services for youth? A community center, programs for, something for them to do, and a place for them to be and be safe? Ms. Briggs Jones?
First of all, we need a recreation center, and we don't have one live up and running. When I was coming up in Plainfield, I've been here since nineteen sixty-eight. I used to go to the South Second Youth Center, I used to go to the Neighboring House. We would go skating around, we were around doing a lot of things. So what I would do is, I would explore some resources so that we can get a, a youth center back up and running. Because we need something for our youth, our youth fallen by the wayside, and we got to save them. We got to do what we need to do. We have the resources, and we can look at things, that, to the state, talk to the state, let's see what we can do. But we need to get a youth center in here so that we can save some kids. And we need to have it on the west end and the east end, we need to have it in both spots so that way they can go around and around and around and do what they need to do. We have to do something. Washington School was not, Washington School, I know the children were playing basketball on Saturday, but I think they lost an interest in that.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna?
So, so this issue is one that usually just makes me irritated. And lately, I'm even more irritated about it, because we just bonded or about to bond four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for an arts and culture center at the old Unitarian Church, which was gifted to the city. I have no problems with an arts and culture center, I think it's a great idea. I don't know what it's going to look like, I don't know what the four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is going to do. No one's talked about it, we haven't had a public meeting about it, the planning board hasn't seen it. What I will say is that the priorities are out of order, and I think that a youth center is a much higher priority, especially if we're going to bond four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that has interest attached to it, and we're all going to have to retain it over the years. I will also say that many attempts have been made to try to partner with the YMCA and the city, because the YMCA was basically a youth center. And trying to figure out how to partner with the city and coordinate that to develop a youth center. These things don't have to be owned by the city, it could be owned by an outside party, and they can, and run as effectively, if not more effectively. But you know, if, if it's not a fiefdom and we can't build a thirty million dollar brand-new building, we don't do it here. We just, we just kind of move on to the next thing and ignore that priority. I, I think the arts center should be mothballed, and I think a youth center should be a focus.
Mr. Good?
I'm definitely not against a youth center, I think. Every town booming as Plainfield should have something, someplace for our youth to go. I know we just spent three point six million dollars on parks. I know our recreation department is booming. There's plenty of things for our youth to do, year in and year out. We have, I said three point six billion dollars on parks. Our pools are open in the summertime, so they do not have to be on the street. They, they can go to the park and swim. We have camps in the summertime. We have a meal program. So we are being proactive. Does youth center sound great? Yes, it does. And I wish someday that we could come together and make that happen. I would be all for it. Two thumbs up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Storch?
So we have a, like a pretty good recreation program. It's not well-publicized, unfortunately, and I think that's something we're going to have to do a much better job with. But I, and I go door to door, and I hear this, what, what my colleagues are saying here, they need, need a recreation center. We actually have a number of recreation facilities. Could we use like another center? Of course we could. But we have to match the resources that the city has for recreation facilities with the adults who are going to be in there, coaching, teaching, mentoring. All of that stuff can be, I think, it's going to be a combination of volunteer and paid adults. So we have to make sure that we don't build more than we can support with the limited tax revenues we have, and grants. We're going to have to write a lot more grants. But I will mention that the South Second Street project is complete. We have a skateboard park, we have more pools than any other town in Union County. We have community schools. Washington and Emerson are community schools, which are open to the public, and kids are in there with adults. So let's make use of what we have and publicize it and coordinate it better.
Thank you. And Ms. Rivers?
We need a community center, I'm not going to call it a youth center, I'm going to call it a community center. What do they do when City Hall closes? Yes, we do have a lot of programs in the city of Plainfield. But as Ms. Briggs said, when I grew up, I had it all from a science center down to the South Second Youth. We have buildings that we can allow, we have outside and inside entities that's willing to write grants, to donate money, to get a full-blown community center up and running. Now, yes, we do have like the Emerson School Community Center, but sometimes we need a youth, we need the community center so that we can get back to the youth, and so that some of the children graduate, the adults graduating from college can come and get back. A youth center consists of computers, it consists of a lot of stuff. It consists of homework helping, it consists of everything. So let's just not stop at what's happening in the City Hall. Let's go further, we have the money. As you guys know, I sat on council. So we can find the money for any, for anything, we can find the money to help fund a youth, a community center.
Thank you. Do you support the use of only union workers to work on redevelopment projects, or do you support open, open workers? Mr. McKenna?
I, I do support union workers, and I'll tell you why I support union workers is, union, union wages drive up, not union wages. So when unions decline, salaries decline. And, and I think it's, it's important to, to keep that in mind. Huge decline in median incomes and salaries in the United States, and a big part of that is the decline of the unions. We don't enforce our requirements here in the city when we have developments. We have random set-asides, ten percent, five percent. We don't track it, we don't have a follow-up on it, we don't hold anybody accountable for it. So I, I think that if we're going to require that in our redevelopment plans, or even hiring locals, then we should, we should develop our own. Especially if we're getting a pilot.
Mr. Good?
I'm in support of, of union workers, like, what about the skilled worker that's not in the union? Who needs work, right there in our city? I think, like I said, charity begins at home and then it spreads abroad. I think we should focus on the ones that need the work here. And that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Storch?
I think we need to look at the workers. I, I actually, I think we would have to take a closer look to see what the impact on investment is. My concern is that maybe some of these investors would not want to come in if we required all of their project to be strictly union. So I do think that there would be opportunities to, to do that with union workers, but I don't know that I would want to do it exclusively. I also think that we have to support local entrepreneurship, and I'm talking about the tradespeople. That, you know, they're, they're struggling, they might be like a one or two-person operation, but I think we have to figure out ways to get the developers to hire them so they can build their businesses.
Ms. Rivers?
I support the unions a hundred percent, but I also support my community. And what was said when the developers came to the city of Plainfield, that they were going to give twenty percent of the work to the city residents. Now, that has not been done, because of what I understand, when they hired the residents, they didn't have the skillset. So then let's invest in getting these residents qualified. Let's invest in getting them HVAC programs. Let's invest in the infrastructure here, which is our residents. Get them qualified and certified so that they can work and they can give back to the community. Let's give them a better quality of life right here in the city of Plainfield. So yes, I do support unions, but I also support the investment here, and that is a very significant city of Plainfield.
Thank you. Ms. Briggs Jones, please?
Yes, I definitely support union, because I am union since nineteen ninety-one. So I definitely support union. Also, for the residents that, that do need a job, we need to employ them and have them to become union. Now, if the developers don't like the union workers, what you do is you set the standards before you even talk, when you talk about it, you give them the rules, say, hey, is this what it is? It either is or it isn't. So you let them know, this is what we're going to do, we're going to have them to be union, we're going to give them benefits. Because people need benefits too, but they also need a job. People are suffering. I am pro-union all the way.
Thank you. The last question. What do you, what is the biggest issue you see for this town, and what is your solution? Mr. Storch?
Do I have to pick one?
You have sixty seconds, go for it.
This might lead into my closing remark. I think that the critical ingredient for Plainfield to continue its revitalization is leadership. I saw that on the school board. I served on the school board in the nineteen nineties, and the schools were really floundering. And, and I was, luckily, I was on the board when we did the superintendent search, and we found Larry Levert as superintendent, and he started to bring the schools back because he was a strong leader, and people were willing to follow him, and he weren't following people before that. Unfortunately, when he left, the schools went back downhill again. On the city side, I see something similar. I see Adrian Matt, and I know, and I don't agree with everything that Adrian does or says, but on balance, I see Adrian as a strong leader who is helping to bring this, lead this city back. People are following, and that's what we need, is more years of strong leadership.
Thank you. Mr. Good?
I'd be like, my colleague, is it just one?
Your choice.
Well, two of the issues I would say are taxes and public safety. And as a former chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I met weekly, if not over the telephone, in person with our directors and administrators about the safety of our residents and the planned proactive measures for them to be safe. We're their eyes and ears. We see something that needs to be addressed, we're obligated to let them know. As a result of that, violent crime is down fifty-five percent, overall crime is down forty percent. Traffic safety that has improved because of our hallway traffic signals, and significantly decreased accidents throughout the city. Also, I want to say something else, but my time is up. Thank you.
Closing is coming. Mr. McKenna?
So this is really frustrating to listen to here, because we have two councilmen. One said his biggest issue is leadership, that, and I don't know what the MAP commercial was. And then Mr. Good went into property taxes, so we have no issues that we've discussed here. So one of the biggest issues is property taxes. And so I've been knocking on doors three hours a day during the And so I've been knocking on doors three hours a day during the week and five hours on each weekend. And the two biggest issues, one of them is always property taxes. And my opponent said when he was running on his blog, that he was running for a fifth term, that he, you know, understands that property taxes are too high. So he decided he was going to run for a fifth term. And his priority this year was to bring them down. Now, they went up 3.55%. He was not there to vote on it. So I think that when we're talking about priorities and issues, we need to identify them. And then when we're elected, we need to work on them. And we need to communicate. We're not able to deal with them in that year. And we need to have honest conversations with the public. Because this is like a giant homos association. We are elected to perform the functions because everybody has busy lives. We're not here to serve endlessly and have the same problem in the 16th year that we had in the first.
Thank you. Ms. Briggs Jones.
The two things I'm pointing out is, again, going back to our youth, to establish a safe haven for our children. I'm very passionate about the children. Especially when you're a parent, you're very, very passionate about certain things. You know, we just lost another child. And that was very, very devastating. It hit home for me because I had a brother that was killed in 93. So I know what that's like. So, you know, I would like to see establishing a recreation center or something. Again, use our resources here. We need a youth center. We need to do something. Let's get our children in, get them safe, keep them safe, please. Along with increasing, again, community policing. More Foot Patrol. We need more Foot Patrol all day. We need Foot Patrol. I went to the economic development meeting when they were talking about the, they were talking about the economics and what they were going to do. And I remember Mr. Riley said they would want to hire more policemen. You're supposed to grow to 136 policemen. Let's utilize them. More Foot Patrol.
Thank you. And Ms. Rivers.
Again, one of the biggest issues that we're facing in the City of Plainfield is no communication. When there are projects that come about, we need to find a way to reach out to the residents and allow them to know what's going on. Me here tonight at a health center is on the verge of closing. How many residents out there know that? We need to do more communicating with our residents. We need a community center. We need more Foot Patrol. When you go down into these areas where there are a lot of crime, which is throughout the whole city, there are officers that knew these residents by name. So if we can have more community policing in the areas that are in need of improvement and we can have a safer city. Crime is not down. Crime is not down. Crime is hitting right now. And we need to be honest and we need to be real about what's going on in this City of Plainfield.
Thank you. It's time for a closing statement. You each have two minutes. And we're going to hear first from the three candidates for the, for the at-large wards one and four. First, Ms. Briggs Jones, then Ms. Rivers, and then Mr. Good.
Okay, again, thank you. As I said before when I came on, I apologize for being late, but that's okay. I'm here. That's all that matters. So I just wanted to sum it up. And I just have an acronym for Plainfield. Plainfield deserves Brigger, which is my last name, my maiden name, Brigger and Better. T-B-E, under B, for the job. That's me. Property taxes. Lawmakers can't be lawbreakers. Allow me to be your next councilwoman for the first and fourth ward. To be voice for the city to give you the results you deserve. Not spend the taxpayers' money on SUVs. I have my own vehicle and which my vehicle. And your voice, we can take back the City of Plainfield. Family that share a common goal and that has changed the direction of the city because currently the MAP that they are using is outdated. Outdated policies and prehistoric policies. I, the organization of the new regime is in their rearview mirror and now is the time for them to hit the road. In that time, you are one line to vote. That's line. Let us back to my appointed position also by listening to the voice of the people of Plainfield. Did I mention the DWI that my received as a perfect figure, as ode to the community to be honest and upfront with you? This is information. Fact-check it for yourself.
Please, please, please give my respect. Ms. Rivers.
Good evening. Again, I just want to thank the League of Women Voters, the residents for coming out to this debate. Again, let the work that I've done speak for me. I don't just come into the City of Plainfield. I've been here all my life. I don't just knock on doors and do for the residents of the City of Plainfield. I've done it all my life. I'll say, I'm going to sum it up again. Vote Line D for Bridgette Rivers. So I can make, continue to make a difference in the City of Plainfield. Thank you.
And Mr. Good. It was though. Please be respectful.
First, I would like to thank once again the Great School of Art and the League of Women Voters. For this opportunity presented on tonight. When I came to Plainfield over 22 years ago, I had no idea that I would be sitting in front of you tonight. In my heart, I've always felt that it's always good to be a part of the solution and not the problem. And never standing in the way of progress. I'm proud to serve as a councilman, not just for the first and fourth wards, but all of Plainfield. Some think it's easy, but it's not far. The fact that, in fact, it's very challenging. I know now more than I ever did. I know what the people of Plainfield need and I know what they want. And of course, I'm a part of Plainfield. The work that I have done should speak for myself. Working close with the seniors, reading and delivering our children, working close with the administration and governing body, taking us from just standing still to catapulting us into the new era. $3.6 million in the first ward, first porch and fourth ward. Parks $2.9 million on 45 roads in the first and fourth ward. And these numbers that were given to me from the police director from December 2013 to 2019, that violent crime was down 55% and overall crime is down 45%. On parks and roads, public safety and quality of life. We have excelled in all these areas. And let's not forget the economic development that has come into our city. That's happening as we speak. I have no doubt in my mind, the relief is on the horizon for all of us here in Plainfield. Our taxes will stabilize through the rateables from the developments. As our city continues to grow, we all witness an awesome transformation that we've never seen here before. And maybe, just maybe, some can put differences aside and we can work together that the crown that this queen city wears may shine brighter than ever. So on Tuesday, June 4th, O. Column A. A for accomplishments, A for authenticity, A for always committed to the City of Plainfield. Thank you.
We will hear now from the two candidates for Ward Two, starting with Mr. McKenna.
So I didn't prepare any closing remarks because I thought I would just listen throughout the debate and summarize for a couple of minutes. And I will just say this, that this is a frustrating experience. Because what I'm hearing through the debate is that people don't understand the whole legislative branch and the executive branch. So everybody talks about how they vote for this and they support that. And there's so many roads done. Very rarely do they have any say in what roads are paved. They just are picked and all they did was vote on the expenditure. So they get the numbers because they had to ask for them. You know, we spend money on parks, but we got a fence around Mill Campbell Field. So people go down the end of their street and they can't get into the park because it's a paintwork fence. So, you know, we're not focusing on some of those issues. And we're not out in the community and then taking charge as a legislative body and getting some of these changes through. We're just sitting and rubber stamping whatever the administration wants to do. And I think, you know, a great example was there's some citizens in town who are very concerned about Airbnb regulations. And about three months ago, Councilman Storch got a group together, a group got together and asked him to join and talked to him about what they were going to, what was going to be done about regulations for Airbnbs. And he said he would talk to the administration about changing the ordinance. And it dawned on me that he didn't realize that he could write the ordinance because he is in the legislative branch. And someone asked him, well, why don't you just write it? And he said, well, you know, they have staff for that. So they usually write it and then we pass it. And that's really not how that works. Now, the executive branch can submit legislation and the legislative branch can vote on it. But the legislative branch can actually write legislation and offer it themselves and actually take some ownership of some of these issues and not wait for the administration to jump in and solve all the problems. We don't need to argue with the administration. We don't need to battle with the administration. We need to cooperate with them. But we need to focus on what the constituents want. We need to have transparency. And we don't need to just rubber stamp everything because that's what the one ruler said we should do.
Thank you. And Mr. Storch.
I'll close by talking about property taxes because I do think they're extraordinarily important for us. My opponent claimed on his blog that I recently discovered Plainfield has high taxes. What he isn't saying is that I proposed 40 reductions in the current year's budget, totaling $500,000. That's a half a million dollars. And that includes increasing library and recreation funding and still a half a million dollar reduction. Over my four terms, my work, I've been, most years I've been on the council's finance committee. And I've saved the taxpayers millions of dollars in expense reductions. If my opponent just did his homework or just followed local government for more than a couple of years, he would know that. So what's Sean's position on taxes? According to his blog, he hit a couple of hot buttons and came out with about $30,000 in savings. I really expected more of him. He had access to the budget book, but it doesn't seem like he read it carefully. What I will do is continue to work with my colleagues on the council and the mayor to rebuild our tax base step by step. This is no quick and easy process. Meanwhile, I will continue to fight cost reductions in our budgets in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you candidates. You have a difficult job ahead of you. You have to choose one of the three candidates for the at-large position for wards one and four and one for the second ward. They've given you very interesting ideas and thoughts. And I urge you to cast an informed vote. I urge you to remind your friends, neighbors, relatives, those you love and those you hate to go to the polls on June 4th between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. It's not too late for a vote by mail ballot, but you have to do it in person at the county clerk's office. Remember, June 4th, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There are many other positions on the ballot. And if you like what we did tonight, League of Women Voters is always open for new members. There's information in the back. Thank you all for coming.